All right. Good evening, Dyton. Welcome to the Town of Dyton Planning Board Regular Meeting. This Wednesday, October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, seven P. M. Please join me for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, so confirming the next meeting date is November fifth, two thousand and twenty-five, in this same location, Town Hall Lower Level. And as a reminder, this is a public meeting being video and audio recorded for cable broadcast. So the first order of business is Antonio Rodrick, Sir Hart Street, map twenty, lots one hundred dash one and one hundred dash three, a Form A application.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For the record, now I'll take it from Zina. This is a project that's been before you multiple times. All these lots, lot one, two, and three have all been already created. There's already homes on them. What we're looking to do with part of this Form A is we're actually just reconfiguring this area here to give a forty-foot strip. And what we've done is provided a little blocky gale to make it a little clearer. So there's creating, we're creating parcel A, B, and C here. Excuse me, D and C here. And those are being one slot here, and then parcel C is being combined with lot three in order to comply with current zoning requirements. So again, there's no new lots being created, just kind of a reconfiguration of what's there. And generally speaking, a fairly simple, you know, reconfiguration of a lot.
Okay.
If you have any answer, any questions?
All right, yeah, so I read the application. I didn't have anything, any questions myself. Go ahead. Members of the board, if you have any questions for the applicant or the gentleman here?
For me, that explanation cleared it up. I had some questions as to what it was, but that cleared it up anyway.
Yeah, so you provide all the, all the minimum requirements here. Standardized zoning requirements for residents and agriculture are right on the chart, on the, on the drawing, so that everything jives. Is the intent, what's the intent, what's the intention for the back lot now that you're making that forty-foot entrance there?
It depends on, we're not really sure yet. There's a couple of different options. It really depends on what we find for parks, things of that nature. So we've got to, we kind of still have to go through that process. Whatever we end up doing will, and obviously coming back in front of the board. You know, whether it be, you know, Form C or a starting permit or whatever it may be, we'll be back in front of the board for that, for sure.
Okay.
I just can't answer it because we really, truly, truly don't know what this means.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a requirement, it's just a curiosity.
No, of course.
Because I see you've got the hundred by hundred box laid on there just as, as a, something that's being thought about for.
Yeah, there's, well, there's an existing structure on the property, an existing home on the property. So we just wanted to show that it did comply, because we do have the frontage area, more than sufficient area.
Okay. And if we were to come back, I'm presuming it's some kind of a retreat lot is what you're going to wind up in the back there?
It'd be, it'd be something of that nature, I'm sure.
Forty feet? Just trying to find it quick.
It is a foot.
Right, it is forty-foot contiguous, okay. Thank you. All right. Just want to make sure. Yeah, I don't have any questions, Joe, will you?
I don't think.
Okay. Hearing none, does somebody want to make a motion to approve the application for Antonio Rodrick, Sir Hart Street, map twenty, lots one hundred dash one, and then one hundred dash three? Form A application.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, take it to vote.
So can I just think of what he's, what he's on? We got to do a roll call.
You got to do a roll call, so we're going to do voting by roll call. So, uh, what is it, an eye? Joe? You got to say your name and state your vote because it's a hybrid meeting.
Joe Figueroa, an eye.
Jeff Cavalo, eye.
Andy Higgins, eye.
Chris Cunha, eye.
All right, that's five ayes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That was easy.
Thank you.
What's up? Jeff? Yeah, you can thank me for some of that, too.
Oh, really?
I generated some of that.
We're going to get in trouble. It's not a sharpie.
It's a pilot. Oh, it's not. Not even close. Somebody's done it before. It's three copies here, right?
Yes.
Is this your fancy?
Joe, okay, don't get in trouble now. This is the right one. It's it.
That's it.
Make sure you get rid of the sharpie back, too.
Yeah, we need those.
Just keep track of that. Last one exploded. It's not good.
Grab a new one.
Yep.
That's because it was on your hands.
Yeah. It's a lot of signing, remember that?
Yeah.
It's a big package. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, have a great night.
Thank you, too.
Good night.
Thank you.
All right, so next on the agenda is to review, discuss, or act on Shaw's Boatyard, Inc., eighty-six Main Street, map seventeen, lot one, site plan review. Good evening, sir, how are you?
Good evening. Mr. Chairman and board members, we're recording a debate from Shanghai to Vega Leoni. I represent Dyton Boatworks. Was a little confusion when we filed the plans. This place is normally, this was formerly the Shaw's Boatyard, as everybody knows it in town. Once it was purchased by our clients, it's now functioning as Dyton Boatworks LLC.
Okay.
So the address is eighty-six Main Street. Property located at the end of Main Street and Water Street. That's where the entrance comes into the site. There's also a secondary access point to and from the site. They only use it for emergency purposes at the end of Cobb's Lane. The site is about approximately three point seven acres. Borders the waterfront, toward the river. This crosshairs area is what you see here in the arrow view. You can see basically there's a marina off the waterfront, and then it's a boat storage facility. The project in front of you is a site plan review application for the proposed construction of a boat storage building. This is the overview of the, of the site, just the conditions plan that we prepared. We surveyed the entire site. This is your entrance coming in from Main Street. The entire site consists of impervious area with the exception of a small wetland area in the northwest corner of the site. It's either pavement, as you see this hatched area in Cobb's Lane, or it's hard-packed gravel throughout for the storage of the boats. This bubble line here that I drew here is the area where we're proposing to build a seventy-four by one-hundred-foot old storage building. They placed their, proposing it in that location because any other location would just ruin the rest of the site as far as access and the storage of boats.
In this, in this particular chart, north is to the right, right?
I'm sorry?
North is to the right.
Yes, the page is upside down. The next one will be the, looking in the right direction, where we have the distant conditions, proposed conditions. And now we're looking with north, looking at the page. Proposed building, we have a stormwater basin along the western side of that. The site is very relatively flat, very little grade change. The slab we set slightly above a distant grade, so that we shed water away from the slab. There'll only be one entrance, and that being a garage door coming facing south, as well as there'll be a small entry for regular pedestrian access. But that's where all the boats will come and go, in and out of the facility. Everything else will be restored to the way it is. We actually will be cutting some of the pavement along the stretch just to place the building in there. All the surfaces will remain the same. The, there'll be no change in the traffic pattern. Basically, they store boats in the inside and the outside of a circular drive, as you saw in the aerial photo. The boat storage building will be solely for storage of boats, nothing hazardous or anything of the like. The project will require several waivers. I'd be happy to go through them if you need, but they're essentially all stormwater waivers relative to having an open basin on the west side, having the basin not on its own separate lot, and then some design specs within the basin relative to size slopes and width of the basin. Pretty straightforward project. There are plans of what the building would look like, steel frame building. I have attorney John Thomas with me. If there are any questions for, for him, I'd be happy to answer any questions from the board.
Okay, so I'm, I'm very familiar with this application, gone through in detail. So just for the purposes of everybody else on the board here, I want to run through all your waivers and, and requested variances, so. So the Weston and Sampson is not here today, right?
Yes, they are. Mr. Pearson, Jim Pearson is here representing, he's doing it for.
Is he doing it for this one, or is he here for?
Yes.
Okay, in that case, is it Pearson?
Pearson.
Pearson, Mr. Pearson, did you want to present anything on your end?
I do have a presentation I could run through really quickly if you want. Otherwise, if you feel like you're familiar with the application, you can do that.
Yeah, you're coming through a little choppy, but yeah, if you could present, yeah, prepared just so everybody's familiar with this application.
Yeah, you bet. All right, can you share my screen? Let's see, it looks like I do not have screen sharing turned on, but I sent the request.
Yep, there you go.
Okay.
Now, what are we, what are we passing, what are we transmitting out here? Oh, this is what the public can see?
That's what the, yes, so the TV that's up above the plans is what the public is seeing.
Okay, I got you. All right.
Yeah.
Okay, can everyone see my screen?
Yep.
Okay. Let's see here, so you, you see the, okay, so, all right, I think I've got, I think what I'm seeing on, on your screen, what do you see on your screen right now? Does it say project site introduction on top?
No, it just says Dyton Planning Board, Peer Review Services. It's like your page, page one.
For some reason, Zoom's giving me a preview of this, and it looks different than what I'm actually showing, so, okay. Okay. So without further ado, I'll just jump in really quick. Again, my name is James Pearson, and the Weston Sampson, we conducted a peer review, and we issued a comment letter on this project back in August. So I'll just be going through some of those comments really quick. Just to recap, it's already been presented to you where this project is located. It's kind of within the blue rectangle of this, of this site right here. And, and the storage building, it looks like, looks to be about seventy-four hundred square feet. It's located in or adjacent to an A E FEMA flood zone. The proposed building is located within the one-hundred-foot inner area of the zone. And the hundred-foot salt marsh buffer, those things that were being addressed by the Conservation Commission, or either they already have been. As far as utilities, there are no proposed utilities to the building, no water sewer. As far as we can see, it looked like there were some proposed underground electric conduits. So we reviewed the, the application for general bylaw compliance. We just took a view of all site plan, looked at subdivision regulations, since those are referenced for compliance with stormwater, and just overall general utility, stormwater management, project constructability. So we received a variety of materials from the applicant. I won't belabor you with naming all these off, but, you know, among these were the plans set, and they also had a stormwater management report, and a few other things, you know, some waiver requests and things of that nature. And four waivers that we saw that were being requested were a waiver allowing open stormwater basin, a waiver allowing two-to-one slope inside the basin rather than a five-to-one slope, a waiver allowing infiltration based on the same lot, and at the left property alliance setback, and a waiver allowing four inches of freeboard for the hundred year storm event rather than twelve inches. So we reviewed all these waivers relative to the basin, and as we had detailed in our letter, we really didn't have any objection to, to any of these. Mainly because, well, for a couple of reasons. First of all, stormwater basin, we're proposing it's a very shallow basin. It only ponds up to sixteen inches deep. And the other thing is that we, we find that some of these criteria that we're going with seem to be acceptable from an engineering standpoint, so it really now becomes a matter that's a little bit more related to the, the board, the board's discretion as to whether they feel they have other reasons besides engineering to try to enforce these standards as opposed to granting a waiver. So again, all, all we're saying is that we just don't have any engineering objection to the way that the basin's designed. So then moving along here, so.
If you go back to that previous slide, I can add two additional ones. So, yep, so in, in your review, I just wanted to add, since we're talking, talking waivers here, there were two additional waivers requested by the applicant. And you, you had made a couple of suggestions to, Weston and Sampson had made a couple suggestions to the applicant from section forty-three twenty-five, where it says, it speaks to the basin, should be a channel within one percent grade from the inlet to the outlet, and the channel line being eight foot wide, six inches deep, circular swell, constructed of sod, or when velocities dictate, six inches or twelve inches of mixed riprap stone. So your comment was, the plans don't show a channel as described in the standard within the bottom of the infiltration basin. Such a channel may be inappropriate for such a basin, and the applicant may wish to request a waiver for the standard to which we offer no objection. And they did actually request a waiver. That was with a new submission, and I'm, I'm comfortable with your assessment ahead of their waiver request. So also, I don't have any concerns. I'll leave it up to the board here if they want to discuss it further, but. And the next one was, the additional one that they submitted was from forty-three twenty-six, where it states that the bottom of the basin shall have a two percent minimum slope to the channel, and your comment to that was, the bottom of the infiltration basin has been designed to be flat, which is appropriate for such a basin. And you repeat the same statement, the applicant may wish to request a waiver for the standard to which we would offer no objection, and they have, so they have two additional ones. And I don't know if you're going to talk to the variance requests here as well, but there's two additional variances that they're also going, going, have to submit. One of them is with the Board of Health, and one of them is with the, the zoning Board of Appeals, I believe. But I'll get to those when you get to anything else you're talking to, so please continue.
Yeah, okay, yeah, thank you, thank you for bringing that up. Yeah, yeah, it was originally four waivers, and so then we had recommended the other two, and so it sounds like they requested those, so, so thanks for, for filling in the gap there. So as far as the use and zoning, the, the site is in the open recreation conservation district. Boat storage was not listed specifically in the uses, but, and so we weren't sure whether the use, whether this building would require any kind of special permit. So we kind of left that up to the discretion of the board to decide. The, this might be where you're talking about the variance, the height, they proposed thirty-nine feet, and it exceeds the thirty-five foot maximum prescribed by the, the bylaws, so.
That's right, yeah.
You see, just, yeah. I'm sorry, did you catch that?
Yes, we did, so the applicant is anticipating submitting a variance to the ZBA to, and they have a, a pretty detail, and I can read the justification here on why they'd like to keep that, and it's actually in the memo. If you want to take a pause, I can read the letter that we got specifically on that. We received it this afternoon about the height of the building. I'll just read it into record here. The applicant intends on submitting an application to the Town of Dyton Zoning Board of Appeals for relief in this particular item, and that's with the building height. That's that extra memo you got. Down in there with the, this is from the law office of John Paul Thomas. I'm reading your letter here. So the building height is crucial to this project, as this building will be used as dry, dry boat storage. As such, most of the boats that this building is intended to house will, and will house, are constructed and designed with high masts that are upright structures that are a permanent part of the boat's structure, which requires, require a large enough doorway in order to pass through. It is important to note that the removal of these masts could compromise the integrity of the vessel itself. In addition, when boats are stored on land, they, excuse me, they may require to be placed on boat stands which keep it off the ground. This will require the additional proposed building height in order for the boat to be safely stored. Further, in order to, for the proposed door to fit correctly, building itself will require a minimal, minimal amount of space above the door racking system that will allow the main door to be open and closed as designed. Applicant has invested a custom-made door to be constructed that will be large enough to fit the above-described boats to pass through without incident and not require any more additional building height other than what is proposed. And they go on, so, and they talk about significant hardship to the applicant without allowing this project from the forward, as a restriction of the building height will significantly prohibit the intended use. So this is something they will have to take up with the ZBA. So that's that particular item.
So there was a second?
No, there was a second. So I didn't, I don't know if you're going to talk to the, the initial variance has to do with, with the Board of Health. And that's in forty-three twenty, use of above-ground or open stormwater detention, detention infiltration facilities. And your comment on that from Weston and Sampson was, the applicant has requested a waiver from the standard, we offer no objection to the waiver request as there is ample precedence for the use of above-ground basins in Dyton and other communities. Again, that's a, outside of planning board variance, that's going to have to be taken up with the Board of Health. So that's the two other ones, aside from the six waivers you've already said. So, all right, I'll let, I'm sorry, I'll let you continue.
Okay, very good, yeah. So then moving right along then, we talked about the building heights, now getting down to the topic of photometric planning. We, it was unclear to us what the proposal was regarding some of the lighting, so, you know, we, we just kind of left it as an open item, just to say that, you know, if, if there's some lighting proposed, that it may be something where by the board's discretion, they choose to, to see that a photometric plan be submitted, so we leave it up to the board. We also suggested that a written narrative should be submitted, addressing compliance with environmental performance standards, storage of flammable or explosive materials, et cetera, and then the estimated duration of the project completion and detailed costs, and mainly because those things are just spelled out in the bylaws, as something that is typically submitted. And then with regard to fire safety, if, if applicable, you know, I don't know if any, you know, fire sprinklers or anything of that nature are being proposed, but if there are, you know, those would be things that some information could be provided there as well. And then finally, there's the, the topic of submitting a development impact study. We understand the planning board typically likes to see those submitted, so we had that as part of our recommendations. And then the next slide, two final items. We just wanted to note that, you know, when we did a review of the stormwater design, it looked like the project generally conforms with the local and state regulations. And then the final point regarding vehicle access, you know, it, it may be worthwhile just, you know, looking to see if, if there's any concerns about fire truck turning, and the applicant could demonstrate adequacy for maneuvering by providing a turning radius plan of some kind, or, you know, alternatively, if they commute with the fire department, you know, maybe, maybe that's okay, too.
Yeah, on that, on that particular item, we did receive an email from the fire chief on September sixteenth. And he, he concurred with the, with their design adequately addressing the concerns in this section.
Okay, fantastic. So that really kind of wrapped up our, our review of the project, and certainly, if you have any answer, any questions?
Thank you very much. So the other item that was in that memo that we got, I, I had asked the, when I went through the application, and they did provide, did provide what your lighting solution was. I was asking if that could be a dark sky compliant fixture, and you responded with, and I'll just read it, so it's, should have taken the time to write this, so. Board has recommended the use of dark sky lighting for all external fixtures. These are light fixtures that cast light downward only, and therefore do not intrude on the dark sky above. The petitioner is accept, acceptable to this recommendation as the proposed lighting installed on the exterior of the building will be for the sole purpose of safety and security of the immediate space surrounding the building. In addition to the proposed dark sky lighting, to be installed on the building's exterior, the current parking lot pole lighting fixtures will provide more than sufficient lighting to be in close proximity to the proposed building, that no other lighting will be necessary. And that's, and then the letter wraps up. So that's the two letter memo that you got today.
There's a lot of lighting in there.
Okay. Inside the.
No, no, in my words, there's a lot of lighting in there.
Yes. Yeah, it's different when you hear what you wrote out, getting read out loud, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It sounded better.
It sounded better when you wrote it.
Yeah.
I understand that. But thank you, I appreciate you getting that to us right away. And I, and I did see, I was concerned because I saw that, I, I submitted this, and I thought you missed the bottom of the email where you said, oh, by the way, you've also got these two recommended waiver requests, and I never saw them until I saw them in the packet, so I did see your additional form R's in there, so they're in there, and everything's complete, so. All right.
Did you see the development impact statement?
I did see the this as well.
The plans do show minimal lighting, you show them basically where the doors are located.
Right, yeah, I did see that. The, the development impact statement is in the application, I did see that, I did review it, so it, it, it was more than adequate. So I, you know.
You good?
You have any questions?
Just a question, actually, for Kerry. If we vote to approve it, do we have to call out the fact that we're not approving the request thirty-nine feet? That, that's separate issue for the CPA, or is that a moot point? It's just, we approve it, and then it goes on to CBA?
It's a contingent upon.
Contingent upon.
Approval of the variance with the Board of Health and the variance with the ZBA.
Okay.
I don't know where that's coming from.
I'm not sure where that's coming from.
I can't tell where that sound is coming from, it's like a separate channel.
I think, I think one of my kids was messing around with his phone.
That answers that question.
Well, thank you for the comedy.
Yeah, it was funny.
If I could just address the chairman's concern regarding the, I'm sorry, your concern about the, regarding the, so regardless of if this board approves this plan, the ZBA still has to approve the height. So that's, it's, they're completely mutually exclusive, so not, I'm not, just, I think I'm answering your question. So whether you make it contingent or not, it is contingent.
It is contingent regardless, right, yeah, understood. I think we just need to have the language complete, so it's all in one place.
Understood.
Chris, you have any questions for the applicant? Before you make an e-mail on this? Okay, so.
Do we want to ask?
Uh, Woody, sorry, Woody, you're not here.
No, I'm good with the applicant. I just speak with some of the abuddies over there, and they don't have a problem with it. And I'm just not in favor of waivers, so I'll abstain, but I would like to thank the gentleman, and anybody tells me they're doing a fantastic job over there.
Yeah, it's a very well put together application, very complete, a lot of detail, guys have been very responsive, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, I don't have any problems at all, other than the way. Yeah, I don't have any problems at all other than the waivers and, you know how I am about that. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Woody. All right, so hearing no other concerns, somebody want to make a motion to approve the, not Shaw's Boatyard, what is it?
Dayton Boatworks LLC.
Dayton Boatworks LLC application on eighty-six Main Street, map seventeen lot one, site plan review with the following contingencies, the approval of the board of health variance as we've outlined earlier this evening, and also the approval of the ZBA variance.
I'll make that motion and with the requested waivers.
And with all the requested waivers approved.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded and by roll call. Woody, you want to go first?
Yeah, Robert Woods is an abstain.
Thank you.
Joe Figurito and aye.
Jeff Caballo is aye.
Dan Higgins aye.
Chris Cunha aye.
All right, it's four ayes and abstentions. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will be in touch with the next step.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the support. Thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item in the agenda.
Good luck on your next venture there.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Next item in the agenda is to discuss the revised development flow chart. I don't have any updates because we haven't heard back from Lisa yet, right?
Right, they're meeting tomorrow night.
All right, so.
And it's on their agenda.
All right, so this will, this will be on the agenda next time we meet. Sorry, folks, if anyone wanted to talk about that again. But we'll just have to get back to it later. All right, so next item in the agenda, I think, is a continuation of public hearing for nineteen sixty-five County Street, special road application and special plan review. This is Easter Day. Would you like to read their letter or email that they sent to you?
So Carlos Siphon has emailed me today at six forty-three, states he have, he has a site plan ready with us. I will send it to you tomorrow or Friday. I'm asking for continuance to the next meeting in November.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to continue the public hearing.
I'll second.
Second, by roll call.
Robert Woods is an aye.
Joe Figurito and aye.
Jeff Caballo is an aye.
Dan Higgins aye.
Chris Cunha aye.
Okay, thank you. Let him continue. Next item, I think is also a continuation. Belt Farms Estates, zero Mike Street.
Zero Councilor.
Applicant requested a continuation to the next meeting.
So Chris Vandenberg actually sent me an email to Wednesday, October fifteenth, stating due to the fact that we haven't received the requested documents, we hereby request a continuance of tonight's meeting until the November fifteenth, November fifth meeting. And I just wanted to add that I did forward the town of Somerset's water superintendent's comments to him and asked him if he still wanted to move with the continuance, and he did say yes on that.
Okay, all right, so I think this wouldn't be complete if I didn't read this in the record.
Okay.
Somerset comments because they're going to be of value next time we meet on this. So this is from Chris Wickman from the town of Somerset. I think he's the water and city superintendent. Says, good afternoon, Mrs. Easterday, please accept this email as a formal request, response, rather, from the town of Somerset Water Department. Wright Pierce was contracted by Somerset Water Department in July of twenty twenty-five to review the plan submitted to, for the proposed subdivision Belt Farms Estates in Dayton, Mass. This proposed development includes an area within a zone two wellhead protection area of a public water source. And he lists a number there. After careful review of all analysis for nitrogen loading calculations for this proposed subdivision, it is the town of Somerset Water Department's opinion that the subdivision is not in the best interest of the Somerset Water Department. I believe that Wright, it's Pierce, right?
It is Pierce.
Wright Pierce summarized the concerns with the existing proposal in the last paragraph of the most recent memo dated October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, where he outlined a number of things, including that the development increase is the estimated nitrogen loading in the zone two protection area to four point two milligrams per liter. And this brings the level close to the five milligrams per liter, so it's only off by point eight. Standard planning value that will require a comprehensive well protection and maintenance plan, nitrogen concentration, nitrite levels measured at the well have varied between one point two and two point eight two milligrams per liter during the years of two thousand five to twenty twenty-two. It's quite the range. The procedure used by TB nineteen zero zero one is a science-based method. This just talks about how they made the measurement. The proposed, next bullet is a proposed nitrogen removing septic systems require annual maintenance, which they've already hit on. Systems are not properly maintained, still provide the advertised nitrogen removal efficiency of nineteen milligrams per liter, which is pretty significant, increasing the potential nitrogen loading to the well. We previously suggested the developer consider a collection system leading to a combined treatment system. I think he means a combination with a treatment system with technology capable of discharging affluent which meets groundwater standards. Groundwater discharge permit program, this would allow the affluent disposal to be located as far as possible from the well to provide a higher level of wastewater treatment than individual nitrogen removing systems. And the developer stated a community treatment system was not a viable option because this is a conventional development. This is actually a special program. It says a conventional development. Right, so, and then if you have any questions, contact me. So I, I, I think the applicant needs to come up with a way to see how they're going to mitigate this. So I just wanted to make sure I read that so everybody understood what the latest was from Somerset. We did finally hear from Somerset because up until this time, we were only hearing from the engineer. And it's just like if, if somebody is only listening to Weston and Samson, we'd like them to, yes, get the engineer's input, but at the same time, that's coming through us and we have to make the final call. So we weren't hearing from Somerset, but we did finally hear from the town of Somerset, and that's the latest. So they're not in support of the project at this time. So that is that. So if somebody wants to make a motion to continue this to the November fifth?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, by roll call.
Robert Woods is an aye.
Joe Figurito and aye.
Jeff Caballo, aye.
Dan Higgins aye.
Chris Cunha aye.
Excellent. All right, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, Somerset Ave. Property LLC, twelve oh nine Somerset Avenue, special permit and site plan review. So, in my handy dandy form here, and I got to turn to the topic page. Stand by. Do we open the public hearing first?
You open that first.
Hold on. There's some formalities here. All right, here we go. Town of Dayton, notice of public hearing. On February fifteenth, twenty twenty-five at seven P M., notice is hereby given. Dayton Planning Board will conduct a public hearing per master under law, chapter forty-eight, section nine, on a special permit and site plan review application by Alice Sullivan of Somerset Ave. Property LLC at twelve oh nine Somerset Avenue being shown as assessors map five lot seventy-seven pursuant to sections forty-nine hundred, five thousand, fifty-three hundred, and fifty-four hundred of the town of Dayton zoning bylaws to allow the existing second floor space to be used for residential purposes above a commercial building. Said property is located in a residential and agricultural district, village overlay district, industrial overlay district, and mixed-use overlay district. Copies of the application and plan may be requested by email at Kerry, a K Easterday at Dayton-mass.gov or by visiting the town of Dayton Planning Board website. Any person wishing to be heard on the above application should appear at the time and place designated for the public hearing. All right, so. We have to make a motion to open the public hearing. All right, I do this once every once in a while. We've got a flow chart here and it's going to kind of mess up. All right, so can somebody make a motion to open the public hearing for this application?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded by roll call.
Robert Woods an aye.
Joe Figurito and aye.
Jeff Caballo is an aye.
Dan Higgins aye.
Chris Cunha aye.
All right, now we're ready.
All right, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Atreen Phillip Mascola, assisting and representing twelve oh nine Somerset LLC, which is owned and operated by Dr. Elise Sullivan. It's a dental facility. It's been there a long time, well-kept, well-maintained, well-managed, good reputation. This is a pretty straightforward application. Of course, whenever I say that, I end up in the bull front, but this is simply a facility that is approximately five thousand square feet of, of use in a mixed area, mixed zone. There has been no need for a certain portion of that space. It has been unfulfilled, it's unused, it's on the second floor. It's approximately a thousand square feet, one-fifth of the overall area. She would like to repurpose that and use it to rent to a dental assistant that works within the area. And it has all of the accommodations, the facilities, the means of access and egress. I believe it's been vetted out and looked at by a police chief and gave his blessing to it. So again, there is, there are a little over twenty parking spots, and as we all know, those types of facilities, medical facilities, it's by appointment only, so it's not going to be that twenty cars go in at one time and there's no parking. This is only going to be for one person using that one apartment. So we would, in, in, you know, pursuant to chapter forty-eight, section nine, special permitted use simply shows that the intended use will not be any more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood than that which already exists there. I doubt this would even be a blip on the screen. So with that, we would ask for your blessings and your vote favorably for this application.
All right, thank you. So, yeah, this seems pretty straightforward to me, but my concern was because of all of the areas this is located in, the village overlay district, the industrial district, the residential district, agricultural district. I did request that we have the engineer look at this.
I'm still waiting for.
Okay, so we're, we, we have a, our, he was here on the call earlier. We have a consultant that will go through the plans because of all the entanglements of this particular project just to assure that the special permit is, is, is in order. So that is going to be part of the review process within the town. And so you, you did the request?
I put the request in. I just hope they have it.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I thought that was a while ago. I'm surprised we haven't heard back. So I don't have any specific questions. I don't know if you gentlemen have any questions of the applicant?
I just had one about parking. I think you're right that there's plenty of parking there. I know there used to be a secondary business in that facility that was vacated by, I think FD Insurance was in there. Is that, are those former offices vacant now? Are you planning to lease those out? There's a use now, but.
That I do not honestly know.
Okay. I think even if you leased them out, it probably wouldn't really harm the parking, but just wanted to know for sure.
Especially because of the primary business being by appointment only, you don't have to see a problem. If I may ask, Mr. Chairman, just for my own benefit, what is it the engineer would be looking at?
The engineer would be going through our special permit for these different areas, special permit requirements for these different districts to, just to make sure we're not missing anything on the application. I don't want to go forward with a, with a decision this evening and to have to then call you back because we, we missed some detail. So to avoid that, we want to go through the, the formal process of reviewing the application with the, with the consultant.
Understood.
Joe?
I'm actually wondering why that they have to go through this, to be honest with you. Because of the area, there's other properties in the area that already have that. Apartment in the business.
Mixed use?
Yeah.
Okay, I was not familiar.
I, I'm just wondering why they have to go through this.
They don't, they don't have to. I was just, it was my opinion.
Okay.
So I'm looking for input.
Yeah, I, my input is that there is no reason for that. To be going through all of this, in my, my view.
Okay. Woody?
Hi, sir. This project stems way back from when it was originally converted from the flower shop slash eyeglass shop. And there should be some paperwork regarding everything that transpired back when the building was rebuilt by Frau Backland. At that point, you know, they, they promised the town, they promised everybody that there would never be residential use in this building ever. And a few years after they built it, I believe Mr. Backland, who was one of the owners of the building, wanted to move upstairs into the apartment, and he was denied. Furthermore, I think a Subway was also trying to establish a business there on the corner, and that was also denied. So every time the property, property changed its hands, let's say Mrs. Sullivan decides to sell it to someone else, and they decide that they want to use residential or use it for a sub shop or use it for whatever, that was not what was promised to the residents when the property was first developed. So, you know, for me, you know, I'm, I'm an elected official of the town by the people of the town, and they told the people and the residents in that area that there would never be any residential housing there. So I think, you know, there are some residents there, and I'm sorry I'm there, there tonight, but I can't be. I'm not in favor of this at all because of what was proposed at the very beginning. You know, and the same thing happened with Stonebridge across the street from town hall. When they came in and proposed that, we're supposed to be the most wonderful development, fifty-five and older. And of course, things didn't work out there, and that snowballed into the mess that it is in today. So when, when we establish something and we tell the people that vote for us and that pay taxes, that there will never be any residential put into this position or this building, and then you want to go back and change it? I don't, I don't go for that. And, and that's about all I'm going to say on this. I do not support this. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Wick.
Woody, thank you for saying that. I didn't know. I was not aware of that.
Yeah, I mean, you go back to day one and they, they, the Backland, Frau Backland, all the neighbors.
I, I own the property there. I, I own one of the corners there.
We live right behind it.
That was a stipulation of the abuddies of the town.
I, I was not aware of that.
So we'll come to the public here soon. So I just want to finish on the board here. So thanks, Woody. Thanks, Joe. What's your thoughts on having this reviewed officially by the engineer?
If the review would encompass the history of the building, I don't know if it would typically do, it probably does not. Yeah.
I'm sorry, bud.
If the review would encompass the history of the building and any stipulations, so it sounds like from what was said that if those stipulations were in there, it should have been recorded. If, if it, in which case it's on the deed. If it's not on the deed.
Or it would be a decision. So a decision would be reported at the registry of deeds.
So I guess, I, I'm not really sure what benefit there would be from the engineer.
Then you can get a building permit. And that's, that's.
Yeah.
That would be, that would, it would happen at that stage.
So I'm not sure what the benefit would be from the engineer. I think the issue would be the separate one that was raised about are there any stipulations on the building? And if so, that's not really something the engineer is going to unearth for it anyway. That aside, it's mixed use and falls within mixed use.
I think that's, that's going to be one of the things because that was a zoning change after the fact, after that building went out.
The layering on the mixed use? Okay, so the question be.
And the overlay and all of that good stuff that was done afterward, afterwards.
Okay. But again, that's not, it's something the engineer is going to help us untangle.
I don't think so.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just trying to get past that part.
No, I mean, what you guys said and then, I don't know, parking always seems to be an issue in that business. So if, I guess, I mean, we can't, we couldn't restrict, if this did pass, we couldn't restrict. I guess I'd be interested to see, like, say I live upstairs from there and I have people over and there's three to five cars that are my visitors, that's going to disrupt that business like massively. I, I go there, so I know how it's a challenge to park there on, on a regular day. So, you know, that's, that's a concern I would have. So, you know, that's, that's a concern I would have. If there's going to be no additional parking added, I feel like that would be a, that would be a hindrance to the business and.
Well, I don't think there is a way.
There's no way to, there's no way to police that. I'm just kind of thinking out loud. But, you know, certainly I think it's something we should, we should look into the matter, I think, further before voting. That's my recommendation, my recommendation.
Do you want to address any of that or before we go into the public for a quick?
Well, I suppose I could say I can always respect the, for lack of a better expression, the not my backyard. You know, people look at this and they harken back that, well, it's only business, it's only state business. On the other hand, I ask, I always ask boards and committees and commissions, simply look at the law. And what we try to do is become more dispassionate about that with the law state. It's a special permitted use request, which means if we introduce and allow the requested use, are we creating any more detriment to the surrounding neighborhood? And I cannot see where that would exist at all. And I can respect, again, the concerns a board would have, neighbors would have. And that's why, you know, if it was not a question of simply abiding by what the law says, the black letter, full law, then it would be, you know, taking votes, who wants this? You never end, and, you know, then on that side of the table as well. The easiest way is we look at the law and under chapter forty-eight, section nine, it's pretty clear and simple. It talks about would it be a significant detriment to the area? Because then it becomes very whimsical what's a detriment, but is it a substantial and significant detriment? The law is very clear about that. If we go by that, I don't see how it can be denied.
Okay, thank you. I assume there's public input here? So if you'd like to speak, please, if you don't have a podium?
Thank you.
You can stand where you are, state your name and address?
I'll speak. My name is George Matoza. I bought the property.
What's the address?
One eighty-one Center Street.
Okay, she needs it for the record.
Yeah, no problem. And kind of like what Robert Wood said, the reason why we're here is because those were stipulations put upon, actually bowed back on at the time, they were the owners of the property when they removed the old historical building. And they, you know, it had to be, I agree, you know, it was falling down. And they got the special permit to come thirty feet towards our property, which we didn't realize it included the parking lot, we thought it was just the building. But all those stipulations were there was never a residence there, there were never to be a residence or fast food. It was just to be nine to five, and that was the whole push on the whole project. Nine to five, that's all it will ever be, that's all it's ever going to be. And they granted special permit to do it on that purpose. And we all, as a buttered agree, and we're like, sure. And then, just like Robert Wood said, that Mr. Backlund, about a year and a half later, came back and asked to do it again, re-should it again, run a Subway and put it in the bottom of the building. And now we're just here again, so that's all.
Alright, thank you.
You know, because it did, it did, you know, it is what it is, it creeped on there. But I'm dealing with nine to five, not somebody coming in at two in the morning or whenever. I mean, as a resident, you're able to come in and out. Right now, we've never had to deal with that. And that was a stipulation, we never wanted to deal with it, so.
Alright, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I, Eliza Kutter, one seventy-six Center Street. That, to Mr. Figueroa's point earlier, I think you're right. When I received the letter, I was surprised to read that it was residential as well as agricultural as well as, you know, and the whole overlay districting, I think, happened after the fact. So, you know, to George's point, he's right, we have been here in the past. And it was basically for the Subway.
Third time, yeah.
No, but I had forgotten about the apartment also, and Mr. Woods reminded me of that. And that is what, what was stated.
Right. Those were the stipulations stated by the original builder. And then those were agreed upon agreement from the town and stipulation on all their butters.
The only thing that bothers me with that is the change in zoning. That's, that's the, the one thing that.
Yeah, that's something that I know nothing about and.
Well, you know what, I know a little bit about it, but, you know, whether we can enforce it or not, I don't know. That's, I mean, I guess we can enforce it, but do we have the right to override that or?
I, I, I don't know. I'm just going back to the original agreement between the town, the original party building, the new building. And they had changed hands, you know, nothing to do with them, but, but it was an agreement with the town, why this building's here? You know, what it's going to be dieted as and this is why we allow you to do so, so.
As Chris was saying too, that, you know, if, yes, they're saying that it's a one-bedroom?
Yes.
If they have company, you know, a party or whatever. That's where, there's no way to, for the town to police that. That's the biggest issue I see here.
Yes, ma'am.
Right, and at this point, I know it was stated that it was a dental assistant that works there that was going to rent the apartment, and that's now, but what about?
Yeah, that can change.
Exactly.
I'm not opposed to housing, but it's, when you have an agreement, you have an agreement, you know.
Well, my, my concern is we have no record of that agreement.
Nothing was recorded.
Nothing was recorded, we have nothing.
Or videotaped, it was all on tape.
It wasn't, as far as I could tell, documented.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
There could possibly be some minutes from that meeting whenever it was. And I'd like to comment.
But is, is that binding?
Excuse me?
Is that binding?
Well, I don't know what, you tell me, I'm not in the chair.
If it's not, if it's not on the decision, it's not binding. I mean, I, I hear, I hear you, but if it's not on the decision, it's not binding.
No document that's not recorded, in my opinion, is, is a binding document.
I don't know if there's one on record or not, but it is definitely, it was videoed and, and.
I know, but if, if, if the video, the notes didn't turn into any restrictions on the drawings on the property, didn't, didn't result in anything written in, in the decision.
Have we checked the registry of deeds?
I'll be doing that.
Hope to be doing that tomorrow.
I can check the registry of deeds, anybody can do that. It's all a fair and well.
So I, I think it's, yeah, but.
And you have, even if it's not in the registry, but it is in our decision, you have access to the decision? Do you think, given, so you go back to the decision?
The decision is what would be recorded at the registry.
Well, I know, but sometimes decisions is made and there's a failure to record. But nonetheless, if it's in the decision, that's equally binding, so, alright.
So what, what I'm hearing is we need to do a little homework. And I, I'm not, I, after, you know, after we, we talked through this, I'm not concerned about an engineer review. I don't think we need to go through that cycle. But one thing I do want to do is, I want to make sure we're not going to go against any decision or recording. So we're going to, I think we're going to continue this for the next meeting to give us some time to go ahead and, and do some digging. That is what I think the best course of action is.
So you want me to call off the engineer?
Call off the engineering review, ma'am. Anything else for the public before we move on? Anything else, sir? Okay. Appreciate your presentation this evening. Uh, yes, sir?
I got one more thing.
Go ahead.
The gentleman there, the attorney, you know, he'd say he, you know, legally, he thought that this was okay. But it, you know, it was clearly written that they wouldn't be asking for a special permit.
Well, they have to ask for a special permit because it's mixed use.
Okay, and the other thing, one of his opening statements was that he said that the police chief was okay with this. And I just want everybody to be clear, the police chief doesn't make decisions for the planning board.
No, but they do provide input.
Yeah, but was it, was it in writing or was it verbal?
Um, I, I don't have anything in writing. He was providing, just providing background, that's all. Alright, no, no problem. Alright, so at this time, I'd like to see motion to continue the public hearing to the November fifth, a regular meeting here at the Town Hall.
I'll make.
Go ahead.
I'll make them both.
I'll second.
I'm seconded, and my roll call.
Robert Woods is an aye.
Joe Figueroa, an aye.
Jeff Caballo is an aye.
Ken Higginson, aye.
Chris Cunha, aye.
Five ayes, what? November fifth, yes, sir. Same bat time, same bat channel. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your inputs.
Yeah.
I had no idea that was going on. I'm glad we got the public here to set us straight.
That is pretty interesting.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Have a good evening. Alright, and everybody's favorite topic, the monthly Serpents Report. Can we add some echo to this? It sounds like I'm.
No.
No, okay. Alright, so, so the, between, shortly after the last planning board meeting, we had, well, actually at the last planning board meeting, reminded that the Department of, what's it, DOER stand for?
Department of the Lux.
Environmental Regulations?
Regulations.
I think it's Environmental, Massachusetts DOER was making a push for standardizing renewable energy permitting. And, and everybody on the board here knows that we've already gone through the trouble of, of coming up with standard operating procedures for battery storage units and revised our zoning bylaws for, for solar, solar farms in the town of Dayton and also for battery storage units. So we've done and done this, but we're a rare case in the state of Massachusetts. A lot of towns have, haven't even considered any rules or regulations at their, at their municipal level. So the problem is developers are trying to go around and try to get permits for installing solar farms and solar, and battery storage units or battery storage facilities in different municipalities, and the towns just aren't prepared, don't have anything in place to, to facilitate that. Or it just winds up, another thing that's, that could be happening too is when they are approaching these municipalities, it's a hodgepodge and everybody's got their own sensible, so they're trying to standardize it, which sounds like a really nice idea, except, except when we've already spent the time and money to go ahead and do that anyway.
And now it could be thrown away.
No, so that's the good news. So unlike the accessory development unit thing we just went through where you pretty much just have to rip out ours and put theirs in, this is very different. So on October seventh, there was an informational session and they, they actually took in, took inputs. They're asking, allowing Q and A. So they are drafting a model bylaw, right? However, what they're allowing municipalities to do is if you already have something in place, as long as anything you have doesn't contradict what is at the state level, then we're fine. Now, what that means, I think we just got an email with the model bylaw. You just forwarded that today or yesterday? So I've got to go through that. So, so more to follow on this, there's a lot of information here. But what, what I did provide in the packet, they, they're, they're looking at two different thresholds. They're calling anything below twenty-five megawatts small, anything, and then a hundred megawatts is where things get. Anything below twenty-five megawatts for generation is small. Anything below a hundred megawatts for storage is small. So twenty-five megawatts is the cutoff for, they call it generation because it's not just solar panels. It's also wind power, any, any other renewable energy source. And then if you have a battery energy storage, anything above a hundred megawatts is considered large. Anything below that is small. So they've got, they want to be able to streamline things for larger storage and larger generation. But the, they're, they're leaving the town to their own devices effectively for small in either situations. So we have to do more homework. There's an additional information session, face-to-face information session at New Bedford Vogue School on October twenty-seventh. Still going to that then?
I am, yeah.
So I'll be there, and we signed up to get to the microphone and provide our inputs. But it's really not going to change. The one thing that has me a little concerned is the timeline they're imposing on people. So, so they've, they've just now put out the model bylaw. Here it is, it's October. And they're trying to push for, they would really like the towns to get something in place like next cycle.
Wow.
Right, so to me, that seems pretty, pretty difficult to try to do that because we've got to, we, we'd have to merge the state model one with ours, go through that whole process and have everything ready for the whole public hearing portion of it within the town of Dayton to try to make the annual town meeting in June. I think that's kind of a lot, but, so I'm curious what the timeline is. I, I think it's reasonable to say, and then they said, but that's okay if you don't make it, put it on the special town meeting. Which I don't want to put something this big on a special town meeting. I'd rather wait for the following annual town meeting. So that's what, you know, that's, that's what I'm pushing for is, okay, yeah, we can, we can look at this. We can see how this makes sense and merge it with ours. But I don't want to push for trying to get something done because we'd have, we'd have roughly six months to get it done. I don't, I don't think that's enough time. And then, and then they wanted us to have it on the books. It takes roughly, once it, so we'll get, say, say it passes in, at Town Hall, which it may, may not, right? So say it passes at Town Hall, then it's got to go to the, to the Attorney General and that takes another four or five months anyway. So that can be a while. So that was what I pulled out of here and there's a lot of detail. There was a, they provided a presentation, there's a lot more information here, but they've got their chart that shows the different streamlining process. You know, currently they're talking about how you've got all these different boards you go to and somehow they're, they just change the box colors, it's a lot more streamlined. And I, I think their timeline, they call it indefinite, how we do it now. But they're much faster, they're not indefinite, they're definite. I don't know what that means.
I think it's, it's a twel, it's similar to a subdivision. If we don't respond the next number of days, then we just kind of like, okay, you're approved because we never bothered to go back to. So this has the same thing, it's twelve months, you have twelve months to complete. The town has the twelve months, if the developer drags it, that's different. But assuming that's not the case, the town has twelve months through its boards and approval cycles to come to a decision. And then, and that's it, you have twelve months period. And if you can't do it in twelve months, then, then you, you've, you've approved it.
Right. Yeah, so they're locking it, saying, yeah, I forgot about that, it's a fixed, it's a fixed timetable.
That's for small, twelve months.
Large is eighteen or something.
That's a big, that's a big thing because people will get it as a, a right. If we don't act on a timely map.
Correct. But that's never been a problem for us.
No, it hasn't, but this could make it that way.
It could, well, it, it, if we have to change everything, it could. But I think right now, the, the way we have it set up, I don't see us being the holdup. A lot of times it winds up, it winds up being the applicant then. It winds up being the applicant, you know? You know, because like, look, look at, look at the projects we have in town. What's the holdup? It's not us. It's not the town.
I can't disagree.
So, but that's, so we'll, we'll have more information and Dan's going to do a much better job presenting this next time, right, Dan?
I can put slides on the screen too, yeah.
Well, I'm not, pretty good. Okay, so that's that. So the next time on the agenda is a monthly stormwater committee report.
So the stormwater committee did meet this afternoon. Our agenda items was a review of nineteen sixty-five County Street. They concurred with our opinion at the last meeting, which is that there are no stormwater issues here. We could just blanketly offer a grant the waivers because it is no impact, zero impact.
Okay, so there were no concerns that were there?
Right. Couple of items that were discussed were, we had given A and R approvals to three lots of Porton Street back in December. They had also gotten variance from zoning board. There seemed to be some issues at this point because the lots of, are each well in excess of an acre and they've just cleared the land. So they're disturbing way more than was expected and they really need a stormwater permit. So they're kind of retroactively going back there and they're going to ask, since they don't have a stormwater agent on staff at this point, they're going to ask Westend Sampson to step in and do that. There was some general discussion about how violations are handled, where multiple committees are involved, often stormwater and conservation, and how they decide who's going to take the lead. So nothing that affects us at the moment, but just, and they are starting to get responses from Westend Sampson about entire review of all stormwater regulations. Some of the comments do rope in zoning. Some of the comments do rope in zoning bylaws that are related to our statements about zoning, about stormwater. So making sure, you know, stormwater regulations and what we say in zoning are matching up and they're clear and who has authority and what circumstances, all that kind of stuff. Um, but there's more work for them to do and they'll be continuing that until December.
Mm-hmm.
That's it.
Excellent. Thank you. Ready to report? Uh, next item on the agenda is the monthly permitting compliance team report. Mr. Eastwood?
Yeah, we had a pretty slow month, month. Um, we met once on September thirtieth. Um, didn't really have a whole lot to discuss. We went over status updates on various applications and violations, um, with the conservation department and also, um, we discussed, um, some administrative procedures within the Department of the Conservation Commission. Trying to remember exactly, like, um, part of the permitting process and the approvals and the sign offs when they apply for a building permit and that type of thing. And also just trying to get a timeframe on the permit program, the building permit program that we have. And then you can assign.
The perm link?
Yeah, thank you. Perm link, and you can assign different departments. So just still trying to get that ball rolling, um, in conjunction with the Board of Health as well, I believe. Um, and then as far as me, as our department, just gave the status updates, pretty much what we were presented today. This is where we're at. It's going to be on the agenda.
Okay.
Um, and we also discussed some stormwater permit requirements, which had to do with the three lots on Porton Street and handling of that, so.
We've got to remember nineteen sixty-five county comes back in that we're set with stormwater.
Yes.
So repeating that again. Thank you, Carrie.
You're welcome.
All right, next item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes for October first, uh, twenty twenty-five. Somebody please make that motion.
Make that motion.
I'll second.
Your roll call?
Woody? Woody, anything on it?
Yep. Robert Woods is an aye.
Okay. Joffrey Garido, an aye.
Jeff Caballo is aye.
Ken Higgins, aye. Chris Cunha, aye.
This is, uh, this is Eastwood. Are there any, any other correspondence?
None.
And I don't believe there's any further public input until we can make a motion to adjourn. No roll call required.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Paul Perry? Aye.
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 All right, thank you. Good night, cable. Good night, Woody.